I would like to remind everyone to please make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Bat.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Council McCannon is absent today. And Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Crystal Wayne to come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father God, we come to you with humble hearts, Lord, and we ask you to please forgive us where we have failed you. I lift up every single person that serves in our government. Lord, we know they all got their own opinions, but I pray that they come together and be unified in one in every decision they make. Lord, I ask that they seek your wisdom and your discernment with every decision. I pray for their safety and I ask that you bless them in all they do. Lord, I pray for every police officer across this whole nation. They have a tough job. And Lord, I just want, I want them to know that they are important, they are supported, they are appreciated. And Lord, I pray that their hearts not be troubled, but they have a peace that surpasses all understanding. And Lord, I pray for their safety, for them and for their families. And Lord, I just pray for our nation. Look, Jesus, we need a, we need your mercy, your grace, your unforgiv-, I mean, your forgiveness and your unconditional love. And Lord, I pray that you transform us by the renewing of our minds. Lord, give us a heart that has eye, I mean, give us a heart that loves people how you love them and give us eyes that see people as you see them. Make us a nation that does what's right. Make us a nation, one nation under God. Bind us together with cords that cannot be broken and bind us together with love. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have an update from the EMA Director, Ms. Deborah Gaither.
Good morning, everyone. One thing I want to talk about first is this week, our heat indices are going to reach the highest they have all year. We could see upwards of 105 heat indices within the city limits. So, we want to encourage everybody to stay hydrated, watch out for the heat cramps, for any type of heat exhaustion, heat strokes. Due to COVID, we've had to change how we open our cooling centers, so they're not open. So, an alternative was to do hydration stations. And we have done that. Dwight Baptist Church at 520 North 29th Street, the Family Success Center, 821 East Broad Street, the Salvation Army at 114 North 11th Street. And we're still looking for three other locations, one near the Carver Community Center, one in North Gaston, and one in South Gaston. All of these offices and organizations that are helping us, we really appreciate them. We hope by the end of the week to start doing water stops, and that will be where water will be given out at the trolley stops throughout the city. So, that's one thing that we're doing to offset our heat indices for this week. We encourage everybody to check on your neighbors, your senior citizens, and make sure that they stay cool and comfortable during this time. Our COVID update is that we're still encouraging social distancing. We are still encouraging hand washing. We are still encouraging sanitizing when you can't hand wash. Mask, we are still encouraging. It's hard. I'll be honest with you, I definitely forget when I pull it down like this to pull it back up. It's a, it's a learned habit that none of us are used to. So, I think some patience with each other and some understanding goes a long way. So, let's just do what we can to encourage each other to do what, what is, what a responsible citizen should do, and that's to try to keep your neighbors and your family and friends safe and wear our mask. Our numbers are, in the last 14 days, we have added 463 new cases within Etowah County. Our numbers are going up rapidly. We're not through our first phase yet. So, all the more reason for us to wear our masks. I mean, I wish that I could come sometime and give good news. I'm never the bearer of good news. I'm always the bearer of bad news. But another bad statistic, and it shouldn't be called a statistic because it was one of our very own citizens, has passed away. So, we've now gone to 14 confirmed deaths in Etowah County. The, one of the most interesting things, I think, that we saw this week was the increase of white females between the age of 25 and 49 years of age are the largest group this week. You know, we talked about males being the largest group, 25 to 49, several weeks ago. But now, it's flip-flopped. And of note, both of our hospitals have seen an increase. And at this point, when I left the office earlier, there were no critical care beds that were active right now. They have added several new COVID cases within the last week to those units. So, we, we're going to continue to educate and to push and do what we can to assist citizens. I want to remind citizens, if you're affected by COVID, you need help and assistance, first try dialing 211, first call for help if you need assistance. They have several different organizations that can help you. Also, want to remind citizens, we're beginning to get a lot of 911 calls for what are normal COVID symptoms. That's taking our paramedics out of play for those who have more life-threatening symptoms. So, do what you can to take care of your COVID symptoms at home. Only call 911 if it is a life-threatening situation, or, you know, you absolutely have no other means of transport to a hospital or a healthcare provider. We don't want to overload our EMS providers throughout the city and the county, and they were greatly overloaded this past weekend. So, everyone needs to look on the CDC website about how to take care of yourself at home during a COVID sickness, and that'll give you a lot of ideas in helping you get through this. And Councilwoman, we had talked about the Antioch Baptist Church event. We did find a date that would work for the nurses, and that's August the 5th, 8:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. That will be the event that we'll do testing and give out masks for that area. And we're going to do some more publicity on getting that information out. But we'll need to get with the pastor and talk to him and figure out the details and set up. We know there are a lot of events going on and that are being held, whether they're public events, private events, whatever they are. Please be a responsible, responsible event planner and coordinator. Think about the health and safety of those that are attending your event. And if you can, provide masks. If not, encourage masks, have hand sanitizer close. When we get close to people, I'm the world's worst. I'm a hugger. I want to go up and hug and say, "Hey, how have you been?" Those kind of things. So, then, then I think, "Oh, no, I shouldn't have done that," and go back and try to use hand sanitizer or whatever. So, just if you're having an event, please try to make sure that everyone has what they need or encourage them to bring it themselves. And that's the update for this week.
I have a question for you, Ms. Deborah. You said on the critical care beds, you said we didn't have any, we don't have any COVID patients in them.
I don't know what type patients are in them. But as of this morning, there were no critical care beds this morning. Now, there could have been some that moved and stepped down since 10:00 a.m., which I don't know, because, you know, they move them into step-down process.
Right, yes, yes.
Deborah, just to clarify, you're saying there's none available? They're full?
There was not.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I was getting at.
Yes. And, you know, each day, that number changes by the minute.
Right.
But that was what we had as I came in to talk to you.
And last week, I asked the representative, and Josh sent me a graph of the age group that are affected by it. And one of the, well, 65, if you're 65 and up, you're, you're in that 16% group. But the group that's very critical, that is 64%, that's the group that ages 25 to 49.
That's great.
So, that's, that's the group that really needs to be careful. I think that's, I'll just say, that's the partying group. And so...
Well, and that's, that's the age group where we all thought, you know, we were invincible.
Exactly.
And I'm quite sure there are things that I shouldn't have done when I was that age.
Exactly.
Yeah, we encourage you, be an example in that age group.
Exactly.
Set an example, be somebody that breaks the norm.
Yeah. Just, and we just encourage you all to, to wear a mask. But thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Deborah, I want to ask one thing. What happened to the order of the statement that when he got hot weather, COVID would die?
I just would like to remind you, that comment did not come from me.
I know. I remember Dr. Kraus or whatever his name is in Washington, that when it hits 100 degrees, "Have at it."
Yes, sir. Well, we'll find out this week if it makes any difference or not.
I think you're going to find out.
Yes, we will.
I thought that comment came from the President.
It did. It did.
Oh, and then, then we, huh?
Okay, you're going to leave on that note, Ms. Deborah.
From Yale. He didn't go to Yale. Let me...
It came from Krautia or whatever his name is.
Okay.
As we continue with our council meeting, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting that was held July 7.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of July 3rd through the 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
The mayor's left the building. No proclamations, unfinished business. We have none. We have a resolution awarding bid number 3435 for the Detention Pond Construction Project. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to the Alabama Grading and Excavation LLC, and the amount is $129,160. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business?
Madam President, I have one. This has come from the Legal Department, Legal Department 374. It's requested by the Engineering Department. This is a resolution rejecting all bids received for bid 3420 for the ADA Compliance Sidewalk Improvement Project due to conflicting instructions discovered in the bid documents. I would ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Are there any department reports, committee reports, board reports? At this time, we have citizen requests. We have Mackenzie Clark. If you give your name, address, and there are also in your, in your statement or anything, there be no personalizing of names of anyone. Okay?
Hey, guys. My name is Mackenzie Clark. I live at 105 Cleveland Court, Gaston, Alabama, 35901. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. The last time I spoke here during the council meeting was six years ago, when I was given the honor to participate in Gaston City High's Mock City Council. As a councilwoman, I sat where Mr. Worthy sits today as we facilitated the legislative process you all are very familiar with. We, as Mock Council members, had formulated ordinances we would eventually discuss in our Mock Council session, and were given the opportunity to discuss them in front of the former council, our teachers, and many, many cameras. You can imagine how petrified we were, having all those eyes on us. That experience gave me, myself, my fellow classmates, an opportunity to know what it's like to be in your shoes, and the pressure placed on all of you to represent the city in a just way. It deepened my appreciation of local government and the bridge it's supposed to form for citizens wanting to have a say in our government. With that being said, our community is deeply saddened and hurt by what took place last week. In recent weeks, we have seen several Gaston citizens wanting to be engaged in our city's legislative process, many for the very first time. What's most important is we have seen an unprecedented amount of youth pushing for change in the city by being active and voicing our concerns and showing up here through letter writing or in person, despite our obligations. I, myself, have multiple jobs and a 10-month-old, but I took time off to show up for something I deeply care about. Amongst our youngest letter writers was a 13-year-old who states, "What I think about whenever I see or hear about a Confederate monument is that there is racist people trying to tell us our place on this planet." And another writer, a 17-year-old whose family owns 40 acres and a business in Gaston, who believes there is a choice as to what we honor in this country. She wrote, "The Confederacy supported, gained power and wealth from chattel slavery. This period of time is important, but belongs in museums and textbooks only. It should not be celebrated." These young citizens fully realize what public Confederate symbols really represent and how traumatic that history is. Confederate idolatry means different things to different people, but the truth is it celebrates forces that fought to keep my great-great-grandmother enslaved, and praises figures like General Forrest who went on to be the first grand wizard of the KKK following the Civil War. There were about 200 letters written to you all expressing our discontent, and despite the overwhelming effort by those in our committee who took the time to be present, our calls for change were ignored. What's most disappointing is working in the interest of the people was mistaken as puppetry, and the opinions of our leaders heavily influenced the decision to move on. A message was sent to our community that we, as citizens, have no influence on what happens in the city, and our concerns do not matter, especially for our city's youth, who realize that a sense of belonging is not going to be felt here, and decide to seek refuge elsewhere. I stand before you all today as one of the few in my class left here, and I beg that you do make a change before I am forced to leave after spending 21 years here. We need a council or committee that will justly represent our young citizens and communities of color. This council can serve as a group you can source concerns and ideas to help better understand the needs of those often overlooked groups. These concerns, of course, will not be limited to Confederate symbols, but other pertinent issues in Gaston such as police reform and education. This council can even provide a different perspective on how best to revitalize our economy and Gaston's culture. Most importantly, it will add a layer of responsibility to the generations that will one day fill your shoes. We, as BLM Gaston, the Freedom Fighters, and other groups can assist in the formation of such a council, as we just want to help build the bridge of understanding between our leaders and our citizens. Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Thank you.
Is this Samantha Conwell, if you pronounce your name, your name, address?
Good morning. My name is Samaja Conwell, but my birth name given is Kissy Sims Conwell. I've been a resident here for so long. I started coming to the city council meeting and speaking at the age of 13, standing right here in this very spot that I'm in today. And it was a question that was asked on last week, "Why now?" in reference to the statue. I'll tell you why now. Because when I was 13, I stood here about police brutality, police conduct, about that statue, and my voice was not heard from no one at the age of 13. I moved away because I said I refused to raise my child here in a city that's supposed to be the city of champions. I see no champions. What I see is us being held back because we don't have enough cultural development for the Black community. Our community needs to have the education and the background of history being taught to our very own kids. They take one month out of the year to teach these kids about African-American history, one month. Every day I wake up, I'm Black every day, 365 days a year. And these kids need to know our history just as well as the other history that is being taught to them in the school system. But the city council, each of you were put in those seats by the community. And you all are held accountable to the community to work for us for the better of the community. I worked this past weekend with my other team leaders from the Gaston Freedom Coalition on Tuscaloosa Avenue helping with the census. And we had a great turnout. But it takes more than that to get to the community. And we need you guys to step up and say, "Hey, we're all going to come at this together to help with the census, to help with the voter registration, to help get these kids educated." I look right down the road at this million-dollar park that did not bring any jobs here. No jobs. Minimum wage, I heard one council member say that minimum wage was $10. Where? Not here. My daughter works at Wendy's in Rainbow City, and she don't even make $8 an hour. What are y'all trying to do? Keep us back? There needs to be change, needs to be change. You can change a person's heart all day, but until you change that person's mindset, nothing is going to change around them. Nothing. Because you have to have both in sequence, the mind and the heart, both have to be in sequence. So, the future depends on what we, as a whole, as a community. The future depends on what we do today to move past this statue, to move past police brutality, police misconduct. We have to move past it. If we don't, then all these kids that's coming along now, they're going to leave and not come back, because we don't have anything to offer them. But a million-dollar park? Okay, it's other parks that have not been renovated. Cherry Street Park, right down here on Sixth Street, it's been there for years. I remember walking through there when I was in, in middle school at Disku. It has not been renovated. Hughley Park, right over here on, in East Gaston, it has not been renovated. So, why just renovate one park and not do the rest of them? We need to come together and do these things as a community and put these things in place for these kids. I remember bringing my child up here to see the mayor about putting chess pieces, and Chessbo was down at Carver. She was five years old when I brought her up here to do that, because she loves to play chess. And his exact words to her was, "If you want those chess pieces down there, I'm going to make it happen." Those are things that we need to teach these kids how to play chess. Get off the video games. Play chess. Help your man. So, we need to come together and do these things for the community, to build the community, not push these kids out of the community. We want them to stay here. They are our future. But if we don't start doing something today, our future is gone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joel Hardwick. Okay, Mario Richardson Ray.
Can I adjust the microphone? Okay. Didn't know if y'all had to vote on it or something. All right. Cool. Thing hot. My name is Mario Richardson Ray. I have two last names, so Richardson Dash Ray. My address is 2810 West Meagan Boulevard, Gaston, Alabama, 35904. First, I just want to say it's, it's with great respect that I come before you today. And I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak in front of you, Councilor of the City of Gaston. I understand that the climate with which I come before you is very difficult. We have a lot of things to weigh. We have a lot of issues to vote on. Our city is in trouble. See, I, I was expecting, I wrote down here on the paper that after I said our city's in trouble, we'd all clap, but that ain't what happened. Our city is in trouble. It is. Your, your seats are comfortable. They're plush, plush chairs, and you get to sit there. We voted you in to represent us. For the most part, you guys do, I guess, the best job you, you think that you can. But the young people of this city, and they're not just Black, they're white too, they're Latino. They're crying out for something, and they're shooting you all at one. They're not going to be quiet. They're not going to go away. These issues they keep asking about won't disappear. These groups that keep forming won't stop coming here. This is a moment that we need to take advantage of. We'll never get this moment back. We need to take a picture of it in our minds and realize where we are. Gaston is the city of champions. Now, you'll have to excuse me. I went to Etowah High School, so I remember beating Gaston High and Emma Sampson, you know, all the time. But I'm going to be honest with you, right? I had to rewrite my speech. It was very aggressive at first. I had to rewrite it so that it could be communicable to you guys. I respect the positions that you hold, but last week, I did not respect the decision that you made. Absolutely not. I looked up Nathan Bedford Forrest. I was told by one of my friends, who may or may not still be my friend, I've lost a lot of friends because of this argument. He told me that this, this statue, this relic that we look at on that bridge was history. It was heritage, and it was something that needed to be honored. So, I looked him up, and I learned something that I did not know. At the Battle of Fort Pillow, April 12, 1864, the soldiers under the command of Nathan Bedford Forrest, at that time known as Confederate Major General Nathan Bedford Forrest, massacred 300 African-American troops fighting for the Union as they were trying to surrender. I'll, I'll take a second and let you recollect on what I just said. Massacred 300. Massacred 300 African-American troops fighting for the Union as they were trying to surrender. Now, there were white men who were also massacred because there were generals who were there, too. He's on that statue with Emma. It's very nice the way Emma is the one who stands up at the top. It's not Nathan, so it's very hard and it's very disillusioning to know exactly what it stands for, but we do. It's not about the statue. It never has been about the statue. It's about these old ways that this city puts up on its label, on its bridge, and tries to uphold to every person in this city. I'm not just talking to African-Americans. I'm talking to white Americans, too. This is your history, too. This moment is your time, too. You have to make a decision as a council. Will you be looked at as the council who chose to hold on to this? Because history will remember you very differently. I promise you. I promise you. My children, my grandchildren, your great-grandchildren will look back at you and ask you why. Why, it's like I do right now. Why is it that instead of doing what we know is best to do? Why do we just sit back and wait? What are we hiding from? What are we waiting for? You made that decision looking straight in our eyes. You told us to move on, be quiet, and shut up. That's not going to happen. The city is not gonna be quiet, and it's not gonna wait on you. You have a decision to make, at least the one you thought you made last week.
I have an announcement. An announcement to make.
Okay. Remarks by the council. The mayor's not here. Ms. Nelson? If you put the timer on, please. Five minutes. Councilman Worthy?
I just need to make an announcement, Madam President. This is a Work Smart Virtual Job Fair that will be held tomorrow, July 15, 2020. The time for the healthcare portion of the job fair, it's a virtual job fair, will be from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And then for the manufacturing part of the job fair would be from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The Chamber of Commerce is putting this on in conjunction with a lot of other people. So when you register online, they will give you the access link will be sent to you after you register via Zoom. That's all I have. You can make a, you can call the chamber, That's 543-3472. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Please continue to fill your census out. I'm, I'm, again, I've visited some homes in the neighborhood, in my district, over the weekend, and I'll do that again every weekend between now and when that's accomplished. We were having a conversation earlier about a census drive that resulted in 200 people filling their census out. And we did the math, and roughly speaking, over the next 10 years, getting those 200 people to fill their census out resulted in 3.2, is that what it was, Councilman Back? $3.2 million that this city will receive over the next 10 years because 200 people took five minutes to fill their census out. Now, I've heard some people say, "I don't want to fill it out because I don't want to know what, I don't want the government knowing anything about me." Here's the thing. We were all issued a nine-digit number the day we were born, basically. Okay? They know where you work. They know what you do. They know where you spend your money. They already know. So really, all we're doing is robbing from this community. You're not keeping any information from the government. So please, just take five minutes and fill that census out. It'll make a big difference on the community. As far as the, just general comments to those who spoke today, I'll just say that we're working on a committee. There's been some discussion in earnest today, actually, about finally, something I've been calling on for a while. I think we're really close to agreeing on what that committee would look like. And hopefully, in the coming week or two weeks, we'll have something for you guys to see that would be focused on bringing the community together and working on solutions for these large problems. Because I agree with everyone who spoke today. This issue's not going away. It's not gonna just pass, pass by us. We've got to address it one way or another. And I look forward to working with everybody on the council to have an effective committee. So, thank you.
Councilman Reed?
Yeah, thank you. If everybody around here is seriously what they're talking about, I'll just remind you, today is the day to vote, so go out and do your conviction.
Councilman Back?
Yes, Madam President. I want to remind everybody, once again, we'll have a food giveaway at First Baptist Church, Gaston. It's the corner of Fifth Street and Walnut. That's where you enter. We've had a lot of folks come by and get food. We start at 2 o'clock, and so you can come by and pick up food every Wednesday. At least through the month of August, we're, we're gonna be doing this. And so it's, it's a worthwhile project. We talked a little bit about masks this morning. You know, so many topics that are being discussed all across the country. Our city's no different than any other city. And we'll come to some type of a conclusion on this. It's like every topic today. There's, there's at least two sides to every topic. And it seems like, no matter what we do, we're gonna have, there's one side, and then there's another side. So we're taking all that into consideration. And at the end of the day, we do have to vote our conscience, and we have to do what we think's best. You know, the mask thing I said this morning, I have, I've had two doctors tell me two different things. One says, "Wear one." One says, "Don't wear one." So what do I do? I'm not a doctor. I'm not a scientist. I don't know. So I'm reaching out and trying to find information, and I'm getting competing answers. So it's, it's very confusing. To back up what Councilman Wilson said, I want to extend a very special thank you to Larry Avery for his signing up personally. These 200 citizens, that equals $3.2 million that'll be in federal money that theoretically comes back to our community to be spent and invested in underserved areas where, where the, where the federal government deems that we can spend that, that money. That could be spent on paving roads. It could be spent on all sorts of things. Food, just kind of things in, like that, in the area of our city that's, that's desperately needed. So please fill out your census. Please be, be as serious about that as we are about everything else that we're talking about today. I, I will say also, and I said this morning earlier, there, I'm, there's a lot of research being done that I'm conducting personally, and I think others are, are, too. This is an ongoing conversation about the Confederate monuments and Confederate statues. And I said last week that I, I thought it was premature, that I wasn't ready. I mean, this is a broad subject, and so it's a deep subject. And, and I, I have very good friends on both sides of that issue. And I'm being, trying to be as respectful as I can. And I think you'll see what Councilman Wilson said in the coming days and weeks. There'll be more discussion on this. This isn't gonna go away. We don't want it to go away. We're ready to talk. But that's what we need to do, is, is to have conversation and, and to talk it through and to, and to come to the conclusion that, 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 that those conversations will lead us to. And that's my goal, and that's my commitment as an elected councilperson, that I want to talk through it, and I want to research it, and I want to do my homework. And then I want to have those conversations. I, I think that's not too much to ask. And so that's, that's what I'm committing to do. And I'm not just reaching out to one side. I'm reaching out to all sides because I'm getting contacted by all sides. And I welcome that conversation. Just want to thank our Public Works. What they do, you know, is hot right now. The Deborah Gaithers said it'll be 105 degrees today. Heat, or this weekend, heat index. I appreciate what these men and women are doing, especially with a little bit less workforce since we've had to lay off people in, in that department. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. So I do want to echo the sentiment and the congratulations that, oh, I'm sorry, the thank yous that were handed out to Larry Avery and, and the Carver Revitalization Group for going out personally and, and, and taking on the initiative of assisting citizens in completing their census, census forms. That, again, that is very important. And I, and I, and again, I think the message has been made clear by, by a number that was spoken before me. We also want to thank Craig Scott for his effort, his efforts. He is over our library but has taken on the responsibility of driving the message relative to the census. So, so again, we want to, we want to thank him. And you'll be hearing more about a targeted effort in some of our low-response areas to, to make sure that we're driving the, the level of responsiveness there. I do want to thank Councilman Wilson for, for, for standing with me all along as it relates to the subcommittee. And, and do want to encourage the, the, the council president to consider the commissioning of a subcommittee to discuss the issue of not just statues and monuments, but, but, but white, white, historic white supremacy and hate-driven symbols and, and also any anti-American symbols. We, again, this is not an issue of race. It's not Black versus White. This is society, which is in the majority, against racism, which is very clearly in the minority. And so we, we want to continue to drive that discussion and, and conduct civil discourse as it relates to coming up with reasonable and meaningful solutions that show the world that we've moved on as a, as a community and that show the world that we've moved on as a, as a city. And I can't express how important those kinds of messages are in the grand scheme of what we are as a city. You know, thank you, Councilman Reed, for reminding people to go vote because today is an election day, and we do need to go out and vote. All of this, you know, people like to discount discussion, but all the talk is meaningless if you don't put action behind it. So go vote. Please go vote. And if you missed out this time because you haven't taken the time to get registered to vote, then take the opportunity. We do, we take time, find time to do whatever it is we want to do. Find the time to get registered to vote and go vote. The last thing is, as it relates to the mask ordinance, I, I want to just give some data because I, I think one of the biggest mistakes that I, our current White House makes is they, they offer up quite a few opinions with very little data to back it up. And, and in many respects, they will ignore the data. But we, our country is made up of people and organizations and entities, and our businesses, which are very prominent throughout the globe, make decisions every day based on facts and data. Not opinions, but facts and data. And, and so, guys, when you hear the cry for people to wear masks, that is based on science. It's based on facts, and it's based on data. It's not based on an individual's opinion about their civil liberties. And, and, and I need, I need us to be mature. And, and that's, you know, what, what we're struggling with right now is whether or not, as a society, we have the maturity to ask people to do certain things. And that's unfortunate. So, so again, I want, I want to make sure that, that, that we, that we look at the facts, look at the data, and look at the small window of time that we, as citizens, are being asked to do some of the things that we're being, we're being asked to do just to make sure that we get beyond this very serious global pandemic. Thank you, Madam President.